In the past year, as far as policy is concerned, I can't think of a way that we could have delivered more policy to City Council than we already did. We completed three area plans in Marple, Downtown East Side, as well as the West End. We are continuing to work on the Grandview Woodings Plan and in the process right now, considering the Citizens Assembly. There will be other forms of public consultation in Grandview that we'll be setting up, but one of the very new measures we're looking at in the next few months and getting going is Citizens Assembly. But in addition to the three large areas that we approved, or the council has approved, we've recommended. We can't forget that we also did the implementation strategy for Broadway. We finished that. We finished the Mount Pleasant Implementation Strategy. We did a new policy statement for Pearson-Dawgwood. We did a new policy statement/structure plan for Great Northern Way. So it's been an incredible year as far as policies. All of this is taking place in 2014, which is going to prove to be our busiest year ever in terms of development applications. And the planning work that we do today is going to be setting the framework for applications coming forward for the balance of 2014. We've got a lot of pre-inquiries right now in the Downtown East Side as well as the West End and starting to go in in Marple there as well. So there's a lot of work to be done. We are a record number of development applications. We're higher than we were in 2012, sorry, 2013, which was our second busiest year. So we're probably going to top 2012 in terms of total number of development applications. And at the same time, as we've been dealing with volume, council has introduced a number of new initiatives that is resulting in us having to make changes in the way that we look at development applications. And I want to talk about three specific changes that council has approved quite recently. One, they've approved the amendments to the tree bylaw, which has eliminated the provision where you could take down a tree every year on your property without having to have any rationale for taking down the tree. You could just take down the tree because you wanted to take down the tree. Now that provision is gone. If the tree is dangerous, if the tree is impeding your foundation, we'll certainly take a look at it. You have to have a rationale for why to take down any tree on your property. And so that requires more inspectors to go out and take a look at all the properties, some of which didn't require the kind of inspection that we're being asked to do now. So we've already had approval to hire new staff to address that issue, but it is slowing down some of the properties which have been on trees on. The second issue is the Waste Management and Waste Diversion Plan that council approved quite recently in response to both the Sustainability Initiative as well as our Heritage Action Plan, which I'll get to in a minute. And right now, as of September, we will be requiring pre-1940 houses to divert either 75% of their waste from landfill to people who are doing recycling, or 90%. And the difference is as follows. If you are tearing down a pre-1940 house which has no character value whatsoever, or has been altered, or is dangerous in its existing condition, you'll be required to recycle 75%. If you want to tear down a house which in our estimation has either heritage or character value, and you still want to tear it down, and we've tried to put incentives to you to try and persuade you not to do it, and you still want to do it, you will then be required to divert 90% of the waste from the houses to recycle. So that leads me to the Heritage Action Plan. Last December, council passed the Heritage Action Plan. A significant number of actions they've directed us to implement over the coming year which better protects the heritage resources and the character homes that we have in our city. And we, just as recently as a month before last, brought forward our progress on that, and council gave us further direction with respect to a number of particular initiatives, including the waste diversion. So we've made significant moves on the Heritage Action Plan already. We are hearing over and over again that the loss of our character homes throughout Vancouver is a big issue for the people who live here. It's happening too fast. The character of neighborhoods are changing. And as a result, we've already put in place an interim measure where we evaluate somebody with a pre-1940 house to see if it does have remaining character, whether it's been altered to a budget, whether it's dangerous. And we ask the proponents, in the areas where we have zoning discretion, so here I want to step back and say, in about 23% of our zones, we have discretion where we can add density to a site for somebody who does something in the past that's been for good design. We allow them to go to a higher density. What we're talking about now is when they want to save a certain amount of character home, like if you saw the house or more, then we will look at going and bonusing them to the maximum amount we can. When somebody does not choose to save a house and wishes to demolish, we go back to the base density. We do not consider increasing in the discretion box. What we have though, and that's a short-term measure, because we are in the process of hiring a consultant to take a look at our discretionary zones, take a look at the non-discretionary zones, to give us more tools that we can use to better protect our character homes and heritage plans in the future. We're also doing a first major update to the heritage inventory that's been done since 1986. So it's almost 30 years old that the heritage inventory, it hasn't been updated except for when properties have been demolished, they've been taken off, or when properties have been voluntarily put on. But nobody's gone out and done a full assessment of what people of Vancouver consider to be heritage for now and in the future. So we're launching that aspect of the Heritage Action Plan in the coming months. We're very excited about a team that's going to advise us on a new inventory, on new tools. They're going to be doing a peer review of other cities throughout Canada for better ways to protect our heritage than we have in the past. So I'm very excited about that as something that's going to come forward. But its consequence is going to be, especially on pre-1940 houses, that it may slow down the development process for people who own those houses. And so in the media, we've seen complaints, I think, about the slowness of the planning process. And we're going to say that, one, we're responding to the broader community concerns for the pace of changes happening out there, as well as the concern for heritage. So we're taking very concrete steps, both in the short term and the interim strategy that I talked about, and in the long term. So that about a year from today, we will be coming forth with the consultant's recommendations on the kinds of things that we can do to better protect our heritage. So in terms of what's coming up in planning initiatives and policy in the coming year and spilling into 2015, is that we're looking at undertaking a planning analysis for Southeast Falls Creek, stretching from the Olympic Village all the way to Granville Island along the south shore of Falls Creek. Both the areas which have not been developed yet, including the city lands, together with the areas which have been developed, and that's the leasehold area of South Falls Creek. And that is a very careful look that we have to take a look at that area, because it does have existing co-ops and rental housing and rental housing down there, but their leases are coming to an end sooner than anybody ever anticipated, when the projects were built back in the 70s and still in late 70s. And we're dealing with the consequences of the leases beginning to be shorter, so that when people want to do renovations, or now when they're buying and selling those units, there are issues with refinancing the projects, the new improvements that they need to make. So we're going to be addressing this both from the planning perspective, working with a group called Replant in South Falls Creek, as well as from, we're looking at it from the point of view of the leases. And next year, our real estate and housing staff will be putting on the table some ideas with respect to the leases in the southeast Falls Creek. We're also going to be doing an area plan for the flats in the Eastern Core, the area east of Main, all the way to Clark, which is an industrial area. It is proposed to remain an industrial area, but we're looking at it from the point of view of two different lenses. One is the green jobs and green initiatives that can be created in Vancouver over the next decade, as well as the high-tech businesses that are looking to come to Vancouver. We've had a number of high-tech businesses now that are wanting the kind of large floor plate industrial sites, but they also want proximity to four, and so they're looking at the eastern flats area as a potential. So we're going to be looking at an area plan for the Eastern Core. We're also going to be looking at what we call Canby 3. And the Canby 1 and 2 plans, it's basically a corridor plan, which looks at the properties that front right onto Canby. As part of the Canby 3 plan, we'll be broadening it to an appropriate north-south street on each side of Canby. And this reflects the program that's been in place for a few years now with the Canby Plan, where we're now getting six stories along the corridor, and we've got almost 35 projects, we've got more than 35 projects, which are now under construction, have been approved, going through the approval process for pre-applications along the Canby Corridor. And what we're finding is that the transition between the Canby Corridor and the houses immediately east and west is too abrupt, and we need to provide for an appropriate transition from six stories down to a single panel on each side. So we are beginning the Canby 3 Plan right now. That work is underway, and we'll be starting to go over to the public either later this year or probably next year. The last area is the northeast Falls Creek, and the area affected by the potential for the bioducts. As you remember, council last year in June of 2013 recommended staff go away and take a look at the potential for the bioducts removal, and also directed us to undertake a planning exercise for what it would take to rearrange the land ownerships in and around the bioducts area, which would be east of the area where the arena is and the east place. So we are beginning our negotiations with Concord, with Pathco, CMT, which is the other major landowner in the area, for looking at what needs to be done in order to facilitate the bioducts removal. And so we will be coming back with a report probably later on next year, as we're just initiating the negotiations right now for the Vancouver's Falls Creek Heritage Plan. And then to chop it off, our other proposal is for doing some station area planning around two of the Millennium Line stations at 29th and Ny Mo, which have development opportunities. And the community itself is very interested in taking a look at what could happen around the station area. So I'm mentioning that last because we've got a lot on our plate, and it takes us a while to get to those last things. So those things are looking like they're mid to late 2015, 2016. So as you can appreciate, between the planning that we're doing, the longer range planning, as well as the Heritage Action Plan, which is a major shift in the way we view our heritage and character home resources that we have in Vancouver, as well as the ongoing interest in people locating in Vancouver, people wanting to stay in Vancouver, which is resulting in the level of development activity that you see today, it is a big year again for planning for balance of 2014 and into 2015. And the type of forums you offer in terms of envisaging where Vancouver can be in the 21st century provides valuable input into our decision-making for where we're going, both on the planning that we're doing, the longer range planning, as well as even on the development application side, hearing from another perspective on how plans are or not, or how applications are or not addressing the policies that council recommends. So that's where we are. That's our work plan and challenges for 2014 and 2015.
Thank you. Can you take a look at this?
I think maybe Andy kind of interested in it is we also passed the Housing Agency, and part of the mandate, or giving some of the word probably involved your group related to the study of the how, or I think you would be a better person to describe about vacant homes or...
So the new housing officer who started last year, or is starting a new housing corporation, and he's going to be looking at, he's going to be concentrating the first few years in three key areas. One is the opportunities for encouraging housing in the Downtown East Side. He's going to be looking at activating the housing opportunities on the Concord land. As you know, through the agreements with Concord, a number of sites have been donated to the city for redevelopment, and he's going to be looking at activating those over the coming couple of years, as well as in the area of South Vancouver in the East Fraser Lands. There are a number of developments that are happening there, as well as opportunities for a quarter house. That's going to be for the next year or two, those are going to be the primary. But he's also instrumental in moving forward council's housing agenda in addressing the homelessness issue and making sure that we follow through with a commitment to end homelessness by 2015, as well as providing more housing opportunities for people who are wanting to rent in Vancouver, keeping up with the rental housing programs that were established in 2009, to making sure that rental housing continues to be provided, keep those rental vacancy rates so that they can start going up, so the rental costs and rental lease rates are coming down. And then the third area is looking at the area of affordable homeownership, which has been tried in other communities like Whistler before, and he's going to be introducing the idea to policy early next year with respect to that aspect of policy. So through the housing agency and through staff, we are trying to address the entire housing continuum, all the way from housing the homeless, all the way to making sure that people who can't afford to buy have a way to buy in the city of Vancouver through affordable housing initiatives, as well as affordable rental and then pure market rental. Another challenge that we're dealing with...
And also, Coramie, if I'm wrong, can remember all this. There's also reviewing the data, or what's the best way to assess or evaluate if there is a vacant home type of situation in Vancouver?
So our, my staff on the research side, policy staff, are going to be working with the Hoctart on the metrics to be able to track whether people are overhoused, and if there are ways that we can see what the true nature of, if it is a problem, what the nature of the problem is, how big it is in terms of seeing. So we'll be working with the Hoctart on doing that.
Thank you. Good job.
I'll start. I have a number of questions, but if anybody else has a question, just wait right there. South Falls Creek, you said the whole south shore, from Olympic Village to Granville Island, is that including Granville Island to realize that there are some city of immigration?
The city right now, as you can appreciate with the media, right now, while we're consulted thoroughly by the local trust, technically, we've got the government to do the grant with the Granville Island. And I think that's our concern, that if it transfers from an agency which had a very strong local presence in terms of the trust to the fourth, that council has its concerns which we should talk about, and that's why we can ask to take a look at some of these options. So we're not going to be as sensitive.
Okay, both of you, no hands to, until there are some. The Broadway Corridor, are you waiting until the referendum is over before you start the planning, or are we start looking to the Broadway Corridor?
I've always been very clear on the, what I believe to be the correct timing for the Broadway Corridor. I don't want to get neighborhoods upset and talk about higher densities, higher buildings, until we know that the funding is in place for the Broadway Corridor. So if we have a successful referendum, which I hear now is March next year, sometime next year, and the province then sits down with both the mayor's council and TransLink, and comes up with a funding strategy, which starts the engineering for it, I believe that once the engineering work, which takes about two years before even construction, once the engineering starts, that is the appropriate time to begin the planning. Because we know that line's going to happen, we know approximately, if not definitely, where the stations are going to be, we know how long the line is going to be funded, whether it's going to stop at Arcule, or whether it's going all the way up to U C. And it is that point that we know what the technology is, because then that helps us in terms of understanding what the capacity is for new development along the corridor. If there, you know, if those who are advocating for a streetcar are successful, to me, that is a paradigm shift in terms of the capacity of Broadway to accommodate any more development. And I would be looking at the technology as well as the timing of the system to provide guidance as to the amount of development that can be anticipated along the corridor.
And if the referendum fails, do you still have future, someone else will have to see that?
If the referendum fails, the existing zoning along the corridor right now does provide for a significant amount of new development, which we're already starting to see along Broadway. And we would continue basically in the status quo. Come on, Billy must have some questions.
I do. I'm going to start with my easy questions. Regarding the character homes, Andy just showed me a map of single-family buildings across the city by age, and it looks like the green stuff is, there's a lot of it, it looks like it's 50 to 60% of the city of the homes are pre-1940. But in my experience, there are a lot of character homes in deep lights areas and in purple districts. Does the city have an intent to encourage preservation of those homes as it does in the city?
Absolutely enough. And we have flexibility in those zones anyway to be able to bonus, so those are our conditional zones. So we can offer the kind of density incentives to get them to preserve the house more. I can tell you that council's actions right now are already having a immediate effect. We are being approached by many more developers who are saying, "I get this. I get council's desire to do this. I'm going to save a portion of the house, or all the house, and I'm going to talk about, you know, maybe a townhouse or two at the back, whatever, and we'll do it through a nature. I get this." So the light is going on for those developments, and I think we can do the same in the future.
That's a good thing, because in my view, it's going to create a new business happening in the past, yeah, a few years, some of those things.
That's meant more work for Ryan's department as well.
That's going to be my second question. I, you know, I haven't been a planner for quite a few years. You know, we've had ambitions from one year to the other in industry, and this time, we fall short of what we'd like to do. I mean, some things are going to have to move to that burden at some point, but I have a bad mind, your staff situation, you've lost a lot of significant things in the past few years. And I think a lot of people get up to speed, and it works to policy depth and scope, so they can cover the dots. Do you have a personal professional development strategy in mind that gets your staff, your staff, the right work and all that stuff?
Yes, we have a plan, succession planning that we're working on right now. I'm actually very blessed by a very young, enthusiastic, dedicated group of management staff, and I'm hoping that they'll all be there for a number of years to provide that kind of continuity. Our planning numbers have not gone down. There have been changes, but they haven't gone down, but they also haven't gone up. But recently, council passed a motion basically saying, whatever we need to address the issues of the complex issues that council has asked us to look at, whether it's waste diversion, whether it's heritage. Every time we come forward now with initiative, like the tree bylaw, for example, where they're asking for three more tree staff. The reality is, though, is one, it takes time. From the time council makes a decision to the time somebody even walks in the door is often four to five months. Then to get that person up to speed to a point where they're able to handle the volume is very, is, you know, is even longer. So there's always change. Planning is all about managing change, and we're doing it at a staff level as well as we hope with the department.
Do you have any?
Well, I don't want this to be a conflict of interest kind of question, but I am a planning consultant. So the question in my mind as a consultant applies is to, to what extent is the planning department and housing utilized consultants? Is there a degree of role for consultants?
Well, certainly with the Heritage Action Plan, the largest component of that is going to consultants. It's an over $400,000 consultancy, which is the largest, certainly that I'm aware of that's going out there right now. So we're relying on the private sector to advise us on that. We have a regular contingent in our budget for consultants. It's not as much as in your days, but it is, in my view, adequate to deal with the kind of pressures we're facing, both on the policy side and the development side.
One more question. I look at Canby 3 and I go, that's great, but that's not going to be easily done. There will be more thinking that needs to be written down. I'd like to share some of my experience on the redesign panel. It's an interesting chapter in my professional life. One of, what I noticed on the panel is that, as you say, a record number of applications coming in, therefore, the workload of the panel is like, we're seeing five items today, for example, and I'm getting a somewhat great array of other folks here. There's a lot of the applications that we've been handling for the Canby Corridor, and a lot of those are so similar. It's like, why do we have to keep seeing these over and over again? Hasn't there been enough two or three years of review of these that staff could know? Do that work themselves?
Yeah, we don't. So that's a good point, and actually, we're taking a look at that as far as when we bring in Canby 3, whether we can pre-zone all of that. And then if a DP is in conformance with the zoning, then we then we wouldn't necessarily bring it to the panel and be a director of planning decision. So we're looking at that as a future step. You're right, we have about two years now of good experience on six-story buildings, and we can look back to the way from the perspective. But I should also say is that the community does have an interest. They think that there's more of a democratic process if they come to the urban design panel and watch what happens, as opposed to a decision from the director of planning. The perception is there that it is a more democratic process. So we need to balance that.
In your discussions on working with three, are you including the bus applications site?
Yes, I go back to C M T as a company.
So would that, would that be moving forward?
It will. And we have been negotiating with that after that for a past year or more on the renovation contribution. And once that's settled, we can settle on the built form. We know that there's going to be a new public space there, about another theater of different space where the existing casino was right now. The plan, you've probably seen in media, I guess about a year and a half ago. And so, yes, we're hoping about that. But that is entirely within the purview of the council.
And then the, some of the major sites, such as Pearson, would that be, would be further work on that? Will that start to sort of gel?
The Pearson Dogwood site now has in place a policy statement. And so the next will be for, so my understanding is that Pearson Dogwood is either going to sell the land or lease the land. And then you'll be dealing with their development partners in realizing the policies.
And what about the Oak Ridge Transit Center, what are the specific sites?
Yes, the Oak Ridge Bus Caront site on Forty First will be coming up, as well as even if, and that'll happen probably, I would say, early twenty fifteen. But we've had a couple of analysis up there already. And then the, what was the other site you mentioned?
It's been fired.
Little Mountain itself, again, they have their rezoning application in now, and we're going through the details of that, and that'll be having a public process either later on in fall or the next year. There are a couple of sites that you've read about in the media quite recently that are being in the process of transferring from one agency or department from Public Works Canada to Canada Land. One's Jericho Land, and the other is the R C N P site on Forty First. If those are transferred to Canada Lands, it is Canada Lands mandate as a crown corporation of the federal government to dispose of those sites and work with development partners. And so we will anticipate, should those lands transferred later this year or next year, we'll be asked to do a policy initiative for both of those.
We've got the First Nations people. It's my.
My understanding is, and like the post office, before the land is transferred to Canada Lands, the arrangements with First Nations will have done.
I'm curious, Brian, when it comes to federal lands, does the city have a ability to tell the feds what they can and can't do? Or do they have feds who are sure we do something that is outside of what?
Once it transfers to Canada, Canada Lands Corporation, we have much more ability to, because we treat them as a private entity. If it was Public Works Canada, theoretically, they could come on, you know, a site and build a prison.
Right, right, right.
Something like that.
Prison, okay, I'll.
Yeah.
Prison coming to Jersey.
Don't, don't, don't tweet that.
But hypothetically, of course.
That's right. A neat place to put Mike Duffy.
Don't tweet that. But as I'm moving into Canada Lands, I assume that the city can ensure that at a certain level of quality and continuity of existing planning initiatives by the city of Vancouver can be fulfilled, as opposed to something that they did this, how do we maximize?
Canada Lands is interested in our planning process and has indicated to us, you know, I just had one very informal get-to-know-you hello to Canada Lands staff, and they said, you know, they were looking at how we did the various policy statements, and they're looking forward to working with us on developing policy statements for the lands that may or may not come into their hands.
Matthew?
Well, the extension of South East West Creek, then, going, I guess, west of the village.
Right.
Is there a really sort of high-level thinking around the site moving to the west of the village and bridge?
Yes.
Are you just sure a little bit about what that's, what's applied to, to bring up?
I can, I can take you down to the model, right downstairs on the floor, which has the current thinking of what that looks like. It is not going to be an area of high rises. It's going to be an area of buildings which are going to get less and less in height as they move towards water. There's going to be another park that's going to be created on the water and not the ocean. So the thing, the high-level thinking has occurred. We've just been asked to take a, take a second look at it in terms of perhaps moving some of the open space around, perhaps a school site.
And just as you go under the bridge there, there's the Skytrain station with a big parking lot. Is the parking lot potential?
Yes, yes. There's a site down there that we don't, and I'm not sure if we have the entire parking lot. We'll, we'll take that as a development.
All right, I'm curious, moving forward, how might the planning initiative of this port extend some of the limitations? There are a lot of this play. I'm curious if the planning initiative had a system.
Right. So in a number of, in a number of areas, I think that you can be an excellent listening host for us, an alternative listening host. We do through Talk Vancouver, and through our open houses, and through the kinds of communication that we have. We try and make sure that we listen to a broader range of perspectives as we possibly can. But individually and as a group, you know, to provide opportunities for the public to comment on the thoughts that you have and the directions driven by would be very helpful. The, the second is with respect to the specific planning initiatives as to, you know, going to be open housing, open houses and the other forms of consultation that we have, and getting, just understanding where some of the public that we may not be exposed to are expressing their concerns or have an opinion about the way that they want these specific areas to grow. You know, if you think that it's a no-brainer that this area should be industrial or residential, that the community, and we're out there in the community, and they're, you know, very concerned about it being anything other than a single family, that's kind of an extreme. But I think it's important that you hear that, that you see that.
Just following up on that, are you seeing somehow more direct relationships than the planning initiative where, where they do have different projects? The idea has standard routine, presentations.
Well, Elizabeth, in the past, it has set up where we had opportunities. Mark Paul Plan, Hall Three, where we brought them here for United States, doing that for the plans and the development.
Just talk quickly about the urban design awards.
Yes, I'm very excited. We have thirty-six entrants for the Urban Design Awards, the first Vancouver Design Awards. We'll be making the, our council will be making the presentation, we'll be setting everything up. The council to be making the presentation to the award winners on September fifteenth. And we deliberately wanted a broad range of category so that we could celebrate the best in urban design from the smallest single-family projects, all the way up to the largest high-rises, and everything in between, and every kind of competition. And so we have incredible examples of named houses. We have great examples of institutional uses. We have great examples as well of building elements that have either been saved or an interesting way of incorporating the old and the new. So it's quite exciting with the number of applications that we've received. And, you know, we're looking to, forward to celebrating that through the media and through the ceremony of our re-apology.
There is a media report in the, yes, the jury. And this one, there's a lot of partnerships.
We, we have selected, yeah, the jury's been selected. So there's an artist, and a landscape architect, and two architects.
Possibly future, yes.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Be something. You also, with all the plans and the planning, realize you're, look at the part, the difficult that and how successful that is.
All the time, to be, to be perfectly honest. You have to look at the Marple Plan, for example. And, you know, the Marple Plan was successful in its, in its way, in the time, in that it delivered the status quo. The new Marple Plan talked about development opportunities on Granville, opened up townhouse areas, which haven't been done before. So it looked at what was done right in, in Marple, through previous plan, and also made, made changes as a result of the changing values in the community that we heard through the, through the consultations. So yes, but the, the reality is, we don't have any plans right now, except for the three that just passed. And then there's, there's a couple more that we have in some of the other geographic areas. The others are more visions of what the communities feel should occur. And, and people actually got to vote on types of housing that they bought in the appropriate. It's a very different animal than, than area land that we've just concluded into here.
In terms of West End or Port area, a lot of that was going on, and there were times there.
Yeah.
They move back.
Well, there's never, there's never been a West End, a true West End.
There wasn't a West End of the same format.
No, not, not like there is now. Very thorough policy basis for future decisions, for council to make future decisions. But also, what there never was, was the implementation strategy. How it was all going to happen, where the money was going to go. What type of amenities were put in front of it, who was going to pay for that? Whereas now, in the three-area plans that we've done, all of that is in place.
So all those mentions will be followed?
That's right.
The air said basically that if the level would be for community plans, then likely the cuts would be fairer. But don't wait on the referendum results, because not only cuts, but it limits both.
And I know, I know he's been publicly stating that, but I can't, as a planner, I understand how you can do area plans for those, either of those two areas, without knowing what's happening on the border. But I think that those comments are now being substituted by the need for the planning at a proper time for the entire.
Is there any coordination that you have, and beyond the city itself, what's went on?
We have a technically, technical advisory committee of senior planners that gets together through the referendum. So Jane Pickering, who's my assistant, she goes to the meetings.
Do they caution, if committees, they come out of the?
No, I, I honestly, I don't think so.
So there's like no point in?
Well, because we don't have, you know, regional planning. It's not enshrined into the legislation. I think it's good information sharing, so that people can have an understanding. But in terms of beyond that, influencing, you know, what Burnham is doing and what Vancouver is doing, other than information.
Is that a handicap?
Well, again, you know, it's been, it was a conventional decision to take out regional planning. The best tool that we have now is the regional content, is our regional content statement and the regional growth strategy that we have. That's as far as municipalities could go in terms of coming together for looking at the region. The idea of liberal region back in the nineteen eighties, and a real plan provided that, the legislation doesn't provide that.
Right.
So we could do it, but the problem is to say, this doesn't matter. And there'd be cities that would decide not to cooperate with us. We, we do what we can in terms of getting the information once municipalities. But there isn't a legislative basis for us getting together and doing any regional planning in the immediate.
There's, do any negative consequences of that?
Yes, I think that as a result, that the, there could be negative consequences in terms of competition for significant new regional infrastructure, such as transit. By not having a regional transit authority, you know, that's truly representative of the area, that's not helpful.
Well, the regional growth strategy was, I think, it should be taken. Maybe, you know, Port Moody and Delta, it's been tested. So something.
It hasn't been tested in the poll. That's the next step, is that when the region steps in and votes for Port Moody not to be able to do something. And then they go ahead and do it anyway. My understanding, there's a regional court case coming up, not very sure.
I guess I want to give my questions more later. Like when Surrey is expanding Metro Town and building used, what, what impact that has on those issues of Vancouver area?
So our, our development now and our plans are being done in the context of our regional growth strategy overall of the region, as well as our context statement policy. So we're not proposing, when the plans come forward, we're not proposing more growth than the, than the regional context statement provides for. All we're doing is, is directing that into certain, into certain areas, like we've done in Marple, like we've done in West End, and then in the downtown side. Our plans are in conformance with our own context statement, which is in conformance with the regional growth. But we're not taking, we're not going to make a decision to take out all our industrial lands and turn it all into high-density residential, and just ignore the regional context that we've already signed on to the council.
Which I guess works as long as the other municipalities are putting their input.
Right, and a couple of examples, like Port Moody, you know, they've said, "Well, we know we said that we were going to do this, but we're going to do this." They do that, but we, we haven't seen any reason why we've done that.
Wasn't there a test case in parts we were reaching on so far? Is it the likely?
Yeah, yeah.
The move, the expansion of Tree College on Dick and Land.
Has that decision come out? Has the decision come out?
Yes, in the court were in favor of the township.
Yeah.
Which meant that the township was acting within the law to ignore the regional.
So, and I think that's being healed. So until it probably goes either to the Supreme Court of Herschel County or the Supreme Court of Canada, there is an issue as to whether what kind of teeth are the region's structure.
Do you think that Surrey's going to be the overtake Vancouver in the next three years?
In terms of population?
Yeah.
Probably, because of their land base. And, you know, they are the largest district municipality in Herschel County. Physically, they can accommodate more growth than the city of Vancouver.
Did you see the focus of the region moving, shifting from Vancouver to Surrey?
No, honestly, I think that the economic focus of Vancouver is going to be downtown and the Broadway corridor. You know, there's a reason why there's a twenty-five percent vacancy rate, or whatever the latest vacancy rate in industrial, in office development in Surrey, and a, it's just gone up at the. in industrial, in, in office development in Surrey and a, it's just gone up at a ten percent in, in downtown Vancouver. Office development wants to locate in downtown Vancouver. The synergies of having the types of businesses that we have downtown. So I think economically, people are still gonna wanna be in downtown Vancouver. As far as the recreational amenities that the region offers, just because of our physical location and the incredible amenities that the city of Vancouver has, and the location of our cultural facilities that we have, I don't see that being overtaken by Surrey. That just leaves the population in terms of where the population is actually living. And I see Vancouver continuing to grow, probably at a slower rate than it has been growing, but it's still gonna continue to grow. But Surrey will grow faster because they've got the availability.
We can look to, is it getting lucky?
I think that there'll be a secondary hub, but I don't see them being a primary hub for the region.
Yeah, you can also see how we're trying to grow to Vancouver to important parts, like examples, like this, like Core, we're trying to afford such ways, green initiatives and high-tech businesses and so on.
But there's a great university and a library in Surrey, downtown Surrey, that I would also guess the easiest.
You teach there.
We built there, so.